Hello, Cam, good to see you. Charlie, ready? Good evening, and welcome back to our meeting tonight. We have the executive session at 6:30, but first, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and let's go to our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, we held an executive session at 6:30 to discuss a disciplinary matter. Now, we resume the open session. Couple of announcements from me is that this is the second of four consecutive board meetings. This is the second here where we have never done this type of approach. This is a great opportunity to understand that the meeting we had the first session last week really allowed us to focus on midterm role review, which is a topic that has a lot of information, allowed us to focus on that. This is a meeting that we are opening up to the public, and there may be some discussion at the end of the meeting because of some of the things that we have come forward on potential discussions from students on vaping. We really would like to listen to students as well as members of the public because some things have come through, if an opportunity is present, those ideas. And then, next week, we'll focus on the budget. So, a lot of these things sort of come together, and it's advantageous to take a good look at it, concentrated focus on specific meetings. With that, go ahead.
Can I just ask you to just put it record, just to mention the students' special appeal hearing?
For the record, the executive session involved the student suspension of an appeal hearing, so now that's in the public record. So, at this point, can I get a motion to adopt an agenda? Mr. Gilbert, second Mrs. Rajat, all in favor? Okay, let's start off with board member comments. Cam, would you like to present something?
I'd like to say congratulations to all the Winter Shen athletes for a great season that just ended off last week.
Well, the girls' basketball is still going, Cam. Hang on now, two more days.
I have nothing right now. So, I first wanted to congratulate Dr. Robinson with being awarded the New York State PTA Distinguished Service Award. Long overdue, well deserved, congratulations to you for that. I also wanted to add on to what Cameron was saying, congratulate the director of athletics, Coach Colan, for the rankings, the recent rankings that we saw with our athletics program, ranked number two upstate, number three statewide, for offerings, athletic offerings, but what's, I think, also especially impressive is for the NCAA ranking, they rank number one for students that actually continue their sport into college. And of course, what we saw today with Ward and Hootler was pretty exciting to see, too. I won't say anymore. I don't want to be alone. Herder, herder, sorry. That was pretty exciting, definitely moving something to witness. I won't say anymore, that's it.
Just wanted to share with everyone that on March 18th, the high school PTA will be hosting a screening of angst at the high school. The specific location will be announced shortly, and they'll be sending something out, but it'll be at 6:30 PM. The screening of angst is about anxiety and what our teens face with anxiety and how they're dealing with it. Also, during our high school partnership team, which Mrs. Miller and I serve on, we were talking as a partnership team, some of the follow-up events or activities or announcements, things that we can do with the students to carry on, not just to have that showing and then have dialogue and conversation after. So, we're looking forward to finalizing some of those opportunities, and we'll share that out once we know. But that's it for me.
My comments are associated with some other items later in the meeting, so I'll wait for them.
Okay.
Three of us, three board members and two members of the administration, were down in Albany today advocating. I always make distinction between that and lobbying. We don't have any money, that's why we're not lobbyists. But we met with four of our local legislators, two senators, two assembly members. And I guess, I guess, to just characterize it generally, the discussion was greatly impacted by the fact that the parties, the three people in the room, have not come to agreement as to how much money is available for support of education that's coming here. It looks like the three people in the room will not come to agreement, which may stall the budget. The comptroller then essentially tells them what they're going to have to work with. That's my understanding, at least. And from what I've been reading, what I heard, it doesn't sound like his assessment of the available revenues is going to be any more favorable than, certainly no favorable than the best projections. So, there is that. As far as what we lobbied about today, I would say that the things that we hit most strongly on would be expense-based aid, some 11 different categories of aid that are dependent on what you spend one year to be reimbursed the next year. Up until now, it's been based on a certain percentage of each of those categories, and it grew according to how much money you spent. This year, it will be the same. What the governor is advocating that there be a cap placed on that, and that'll result in probably the funding, if it were to pass, that is. That would result in the funding of mandates, because they are mandates, and everything else potentially suffering as a consequence, and vital services that we provide would be adversely affected. As far as foundation aid is concerned, you know, we need to know what it's going to be. It's got to be dependable, it's got to be predictable, and it can't be up in the air day or year in and year out. The only way we really survive and do it well is to know what's going to be available out into the future and to plan ahead to meet whatever the expected situation is going to be. It is exactly that that allows us, despite the fact that the fiscal picture might not be particularly good this year, to still function and provide what we need to provide for our students. There are many districts that will be really hurt as a consequence of a diminished level of, not a literal diminished level, but a diminished level of increase this year, far short of what they need just to maintain services.
At this point, I just want to remind everybody, thanks Gary for those comments. Green and White Gala, April 13th, Saturday, April 13th, I'm going to continue reminding, and I'm hoping to see all the board members there. That would be really great this year. Hilton Garden Inn, we start at 6:00, and we end about 10:30, so please, if you're, we'd love to see you there, hosted by the Shen Ed Foundation.
Thank you, Deanna. Some discussions, some thoughts I have on the budget. New York State is very fragmented in terms of where we want to go. We have a lot of political folks, a lot of school districts, and it really comes down to whoever can scream aloud, seems to get what they think they deserve, and those that don't have a voice often don't get what they deserve. That seems to be continuing. We have an opportunity in the state to really cross-level between districts, and this is a term I like to use because there are some districts that, because of the nature of their economy, the nature of their population, they're on a downward slide. Other districts are thriving, okay? We tend to be very much in the middle and a very, very stable community that I would say, year over year, we can say that we thrive, and we do very well. But there's no way to cross-level the amount of money that comes from the state in such a way that's fair to all the districts. The state, New York State, has a formula, the foundation aid formula, and we're simply ignoring that. And I think our state leaders, particularly our governor, are missing the opportunity to really address education so that we can proceed year after year with this formula to cross-level between districts. So, I think we're in good shape. I was very impressed with all the speakers that we met, I was very impressed with their staff, they know what's going on, they do this all the time, they've had lobbyists in front of them. But it's very important that we assert our presence. If you don't assert your presence there, you run the risk of not having a voice at all. So, thank you very much for attending, thank you very much for the letters that go out. We need to always say what's important to us as a district, we need to ensure constituents hear that and see that, because if you don't, then you could get passed. So, we ensured we did not get ignored, and thank you very much. That's all I have. At this point, we're going to turn it over to public comments. If you have anybody from the public that would like to come forward, any students? We'll start off with our students, and I'll read to you the standard message. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. If so, please complete the comment form. The Board will not address specific comments, but ask for your name and address. Event follow-up is necessary. We remind students that the public comment is only one item along the agenda. We therefore ask each speaker to be as succinct as possible. Remarks are limited to two or three minutes. We also expect that residents speak in a respectful, courteous manner, so as to monitor proper civility and decorum for our students. We will not allow disparaging, inflammatory, or accusational comments about any school personnel or students during the public comments. Residents may also contact the Board by email at boach@shen.net.org. Questions come in the Office of Public Information Officer, and share with the Board and superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions are typically addressed by the superintendent and or designated. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to our students, thank you.
Good evening. Since the last board business meeting, the Shen SFA Senate has held a speak-up. It was held in the new library, in one of the computer labs, and the topics were Chromebook policy and bathroom policy. So, questions were raised about, you know, how seniors will retire their Chromebooks and so on. In the upcoming months, we will, in May, not the upcoming month, May 24th, we will be holding our second annual Day of the Arts event. And basically, it's an event the Shen SFA Senate holds to celebrate artists, writers, actors, musicians, and the like. And so, it's just a day where artwork might be on display in the library, we might do some fun activities in the courtyard, and maybe do a tie-dye.
And then, this upcoming, next Friday, March 15th, at 6:30 in the old gym at High School East, we're having our Senate SFA Dodgeball Tournament. So far, we've had enough teams that we're now making profit off the event, which is very exciting for our Senate.
Is it 15:00?
Yes, at 6:30. 5:30, excuse me, it's 5:30. And then, elections for the upcoming year have started, packets are available in the Capps Office in each school.
Good.
Thank you so much. You, too.
Bob, just real quick, if I can backtrack now on my comment. I just, that notification about that screening of angst, it is March 18th, like we said, but 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and it is offered to all parents K through 12, you know, so it's not just for the high school, and it will be in Luana Auditorium with the screen, after the screening, a quick panel question and answer session, so.
Okay.
6:00 to 8:00.
Any other public comments, members of the public? If not, we'll turn it over to superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presley. And just to reiterate the couple of comments that the Board offered, thank you to those board members who were able to juggle work schedules to attend the lobbying advocacy efforts today. We recognize that it's always a difficult proposition to give up a good portion of the day to do so, but certainly worthwhile to try to hopefully educate and inform our legislative representatives so they can be a true voice for us in the meetings, at the table, or wherever those discussions may occur. So, while we didn't leave with any concrete positive news, we certainly left with feeling that we, our voices were heard, as Mr. Presley mentioned, so we look forward to see how that whole process is going to transpire. And as we continue with our budget process with Mrs. Chase, and you'll hear more about this on next Tuesday, we are taking the approach that, we take a very conservative approach through the budget process, and if there's good news, come with the state passage of budget, which we're hearing today, that some people skeptical that it will be on time for April 1st, we'll see. We still have an obligation to the community, as well as a legal obligation, to commence with our processes regardless of what's happening at the state level. So, again, thanks for those who were able to attend, and for those who didn't, certainly understandable how schedules sometime get in the way. We have a community conversation this coming Saturday at, exactly, where is that?
High School East.
High School East, and so, we'll be there, and this will be probably shorter than others because I'm also leaving that to go and attend a robotics competition at RPI, which is, we are very pleased that the Shen robotics team is instrumental, not only in helping organize the event with Mrs. Rose Barra, but the Shen team is instrumental in many of the teams that are competing, helping those teams form, supporting those teams over the years, and so it's always a great thing for us to go and be present. So, again, if you, as board members, if you have an interest in attending an event, certainly we can try to send you the detail for the event start on, so probably several hours, actually it's all-day thing, but I'm probably going to be there for the morning portion of it, of the competition.
Do you want to be there for the parade? I think it's around 11:30 again.
I'm trying to, because if we're done here at 11, shooting right over the afternoon.
Yeah, I plan to be there for that.
Yeah. Just some quick updates. As the board know, we're in the process of filling several, actually four administrative positions, and kudos to Mrs. Bush and Dr. Wood, who have been spearheading those processes. We're in the final rounds of two days of interviews coming up. Mr. Presley will be joining us on this Thursday and Friday for final rounds of the elementary principal interviews. So, we're looking forward to that, and hopefully, if all goes well, not the 12th, but the meeting after that, having a recommendation to the Board. We have to do some reference check site visits, if necessary, things of that nature. So, this process will still continue probably for several weeks after the final interviews. Also, we'll start the process for the associate principal interviews to replace Mr. Ripchick, who is retiring at the end of the school year, and we've already initiated the process to replace Mrs. Beckett, who's the assistant principal at Coe Middle School. So, a lot of opportunities, very challenging calendar schedules to get a lot of people in the same place at the same time, however, we know the importance of doing so. And the last piece I just want to mention, and just ask him to stand, several weeks back, we actually have several, probably several months, he's been here now for a couple of weeks, you probably think it's been a couple of years, we appointed a new director of operations facilities. I mix them up all the time, Mr. Steve West. So, I would actually, actually, not only ask Mr. West to stand, but just to come forward so the Board could get a chance to formally greet you, he was appointed, he's been on the job, and we threw him in right away to many crises, from the flooding at Carrigan to you name it. He has, understands what it's like to work at Shen, there's never a dull moment, there's always something happening. So, this is Steve West, our new director of facilities. So, just a chance for the Board to meet him.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity, by the way. I'm really excited to be here. I did hit the ground running, and that's exactly what I wanted, and I'm really excited to play it for cheese.
Just do some handshakes, and thank you, welcome to the Board.
Welcome, Stephen.
And so, just before we go into that, by the way, I was sharply criticized at the superintendent's Winter Institute this weekend by a superintendent from a school district who stood up in the middle and said, "You stole my best employee," as she made reference to Mr. West. Because, just a quick story, Mr. West, not only was the director of facilities there, he was, he coached several sports.
Ah.
He did it all, he was the head of IT. So, for certain one person, we, they had to replace like six.
Oh, wow.
So, we only wanted him to do three jobs here.
Okay, is that all?
So, you know, only half is loaded, so I think he should be okay doing the job he is. We're pleased to have Steve aboard, and like to support his success here at Shen, so again, thank you for being here. You want me to continue with the other items here?
Sure.
On information item, we have, this is, believe it or not, the time of year as we go through the budget, but it's also the time of year where we start the process for board member nominations, petition, election process. And so, tonight, we have here the forms for individuals who may be interested in running for the Board of Education. We have three seats on the Board up for reelection, Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Delalo, and Mrs. Stevenson. And so, tonight, the process officially starts, the petitions are available tonight, and so certainly after three individuals are up and up to the challenge again, they can certainly grab their petitions. It's available to the public as well through Mrs. Chase's office, who's a district clerk. You can certainly make those either through my office, quite frankly, Mrs. Ford can make the forms available to anyone who's interested in running for the Board. Per law, there's a stipulation in terms of the number of signatures, it's continued upon the number of voters of prior year. This is probably one of the lower numbers I've seen in recent years, 42 signatures required on the petition. And so, that's a notable piece. The petition must be returned, and this is a very strict timeline, must be returned on April 22nd. April 22nd is a unique situation for us because April 22nd is not a workday for staff. So, we have made arrangements through myself, Mrs. Chase, and Mrs. Adamcheck that someone will be available, because by law, we have, it's not a federal holiday, so we can't extend it to the next day. It's a school, it's an internal personal account contractual piece with the contracts and the spring break and things of that nature. So, we will have someone available to collect the petitions on the 22nd until 5:00 PM as well. So, tonight is the start of the process, and it has been customary in the past that certainly members of the Board who are up for reelection, if they so choose, can express their thoughts and even get a petition tonight as well.
I've got one thing to add to that. NISBA website does have directions for board members, for potential board members that have never done this before, so I think it's important for members of the public that are listening to this message, to listening to the video, you should look at that. I think one of the best pieces of advice they have is that if you want to focus on one specific issue, a school board is where you really don't want to be. Better to focus on that issue, because we expect a lot of our board members and all of the people around this table definitely take a broad look at where we're going, and I think that's one of the things I think the move within this Board is we need to continue that broad perspective of what we want to be for all students.
So, I don't know if any board members, particularly the three, if there are any thoughts, questions about the process or not.
I can tell you my intentions.
There you go.
We are a very highly functioning Board, as far as I'm concerned. We agree and we disagree, but we're always focused on the right things, which at the end of the day is the students and the district and the employees, and we see that, and while we may have disagreements here or there, we always get to the right goal at the end, and we make the right decision. So, I am very happy, we've got great experience, we have new board members, and I'm right in the middle, and I love it, so.
Well, I've been on the Board now for nearly 18 years, this one, and Capital Region, both sees, I think, eight. I was trying to figure that one out. I believe that made some significant contributions in my time on the Board, not just occupying space, but working with others, and it made a difference. The work of the Board continues to be rewarding, interesting, and sometimes challenging endeavor. I still have the ability, I think, to contribute and make a difference. Therefore, I've decided to run for my seventh term on the Board.
Wow.
So, Dr. Robinson calls it a challenge. I look at it as an opportunity and a great honor, and tonight, I address my colleagues around the Board table and the community as I declare my intention to seek reelection, to a second term as a member of the Shen Endahella Board of Education. As I have reflected on my time on the Board since 2016, I am continually in awe of the positive strides this district makes to encompass the whole student. I continue to learn in this position, and one that is never stagnant. Many challenges are upon us all the time. We look at the political aspects, the financial, cultural diversity, social justice issues, safety, health and wellness, the list is endless, and as we continue this Board, we'll even be looking at land acquisitions soon. I will say, when I considered running, a Board run, I knew everything, I thought I knew everything, I mix up everything that happens at Shen while I did all my PTA work, but I got to tell you, I stepped into this role, I knew nothing. This district is huge, the aspects of it are endless, and I continue to learn every day. I could not have been more wrong. Some people feel that when they come on the Board, they have one thing in mind, that they're going to fix one thing, and you cannot do that as a Board member. We work collaboratively. I am one of seven people that sit on this Board of Education. I respect each and every one of you for everything that you do and contribute. So, at this point, I seek the continued support of my colleagues around this Board table and the community as I seek my second term, so thank you very much.
Pass one of these on. Thank you. Same set.
And I will pass this around. Okay, so, next item is the claims audit report. Mrs. Chase, join us.
If there's any questions.
Thank you.
Any highlights?
The Audit Committee met to discuss this as one of the audit reports. There weren't really any particular items of note. I think the only thing that was brought to our attention is that there were a couple of instances where appeal was not done in advance of an invoice arriving at the district. We try, but sometimes it happens in reverse, but those expenses were deemed appropriate and, okay, so.
No findings.
There were no findings, correct.
And the only time we could meet was during the break. That was the only time everyone was available, so that was. The only thing I could ask going forward is if you could send us the minutes before this meeting, but I did review them, they're fine.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Okay.
And B and C. So, Mrs. Carmen, please come up to discuss policy first readings.
Good evening. So, tonight, we have several different policies from the financial side of the policy manual that we're presenting for first reading. Any questions?
Comment for me, I mean, I'm probably one of the most looked-over types of policy is our gift policy, and I would say, I'd like to thank Dr. Robinson for some of the comments he made. I think the district has a mindset to be practical and really understand the purpose of why we have these policies, but not try to be overly intrusive to the point that it almost becomes a negative thing to even think about gift. I think a lot of the clubs here sincerely present gifts to coaches, students, and parents sincerely present, you know, the right type of gift to the teachers, and I think we're applying this fairly well, but I think that sometimes organizations try to make that into such a big deal that it really is counterproductive, and I think your comments during the meeting, I thought it created an air of practicality. I mean, people want to give gifts for a reason, okay, but they don't want to make this so intrusive that it's just hard to do.
Or set an expectation.
Yeah, or setting expectations.
As if that was one of the points that was being made.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, done with the information items, let's go to consent items. Can I have a motion on the treasurer's report? Mrs. Hoffman, any second? Mrs. Stevenson, any comments? All in favor? Okay, and let's go separate on the meeting, on the minutes, motion on meetings, meeting of February 5th, can I have a motion, Mr. Gilbert, second, Mrs. Hoffman, all in favor? And minutes on February 26th, can I have a motion, Mrs. Rajat, second, Mrs. Miller? Abstention from Mr. Gilbert, all in favor, so we have six. Let's go into action items, business item. First item, adoption of the 2019-2020 school calendar. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Rajat, second, Mrs. Miller, any thoughts, comments on the calendar? If not, all in favor? And then, we have a bid for inter-scholastic sports uniforms, motion on this one. And we have a change order for Tri Valley, motion on this one? Mrs. Rajat, second, Mrs. Miller, all in favor? And we have a change order for Tri Valley, motion on this one? Mrs. Rajat, second, Mrs. Miller, all in favor? Number four, scholarships and local donations, can I have a motion on this one?
With gratitude.
Mrs. Rajat, with gratitude, can I have a second? Mr. Delalo, any comments? All in favor? Okay, and we have approval of internal control reporting corrective action plan risk assessment. Motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman, second, Mrs. Miller, any comments? All in favor? Okay, let's go to Mrs. Mylott and acceptance of special education.
Good evening. I have for you tonight the first of the 2019-20 recommendations in addition to current recommendations for current school year.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Delalo, second, Mrs. Miller, any comments? All in favor? And let's go to personnel staffing recommendations and transportation changes.
It's kind of a light agenda tonight. We have one recommendation for an appointment of a term teacher. Claire Angler will be joining our AIS staff for the remainder of the school year because of her retirement. There are no retirements on this board agenda.
Motion on this? Mrs. Rajat, second, Mr. Gilbert, all in favor? And let's go to Mrs. Carmen for a second reading, policy and procedures. Go ahead, please.
So, we presented these policies for first reading in February. Tonight, they're being presented for second reading and approval. Any questions?
Can I have a motion on this one? Mr. Gilbert, second, Mrs. Hoffman, comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Thank you.
Can I ask you one comment?
Sure.
I just asked for a privilege just to share one comment that I probably should have shared in the superintendent's comment, actually about an event that I attended today. And not saying this because of Mrs. Hoffman's affiliation with the organization, I was privileged to be a part of a group of individuals invited to the ribbon cutting for kitware, which opened up a spectacular facility right on Route 9, as you're going towards the district office. And it's interesting that, right in our own backyard, so to speak, we have a company that's impacting the world. And so, just being there today was just fascinating to hear about some of the software applications and some of the things that they're changing. When I say impacting the world, not only from a commercial perspective, but from a safety perspective, working for various governmental entities. And so, it's always fascinating to me, the things that you don't sometimes even know that's happening within your own community, that companies that have such huge reach and impact. And so, I was privileged to be invited to that particular event. And Lieutenant Governor was there and offered some, I thought, some terrific comments, particularly with not only Mr. Hoffman, who's the chief technology officer, but Dr. Avila, who, she's the chief executive officer. And comments about, particular about our young ladies and leading organizations, but also leading an organization that's largely right now dominated by males, not only in the organization, but leadership. And so, I sat there, I thought that, wow, this is something that if I didn't attend that, it would have been such a missed opportunity to figure out how we use that to contextualize, if you will, the work that we're trying to do as a system. How do we say to our young people, "You too can be that person," because those people live in our communities and work in our communities and doing things that's literally and figuratively impacting the world. So, I just wanted to just share those comments because I thought it was just a profound, for me, just to sit there and kind of take that whole experience in and thinking that we're so privileged as a school community. And I know that Mrs. Carmen has already made some contacts and some connections to try to see if we can expose our students to that organization as a way to, again, to put academics into a very practical light. And so, we hope to continue those partnerships, not only with kitware, but in many of those organizations that's doing those things. And so, I just wanted to offer that comment and say to Mrs. Hoffman, thank you very much. You were such a gracious, even though it wasn't your official tour duty, she was so great to tell me so much inside the organization that I think I probably wouldn't have otherwise learned about. So, thank you very much.
I'm really happy that you and Dr. Will were able to attend. And Dr. Robinson actually tried to learn a bit about haptics, using haptics to do surgery. And although I don't think our patient made it, but he used artificial intelligence and a haptic device to perform surgery, and we have it on video.
Yeah, we know our limits.
So, he's on his way to his medical degree now. Right, but yeah, it was, it was really, really a great afternoon, and I know it took a lot of your time, but I do appreciate you attending.
Thank you, thank you. My apologies.
No problem. Public comments, I did mention this to some board, to all our board members, that we're kind of at a, I would say, decision point, but definitely a conversation point over the next two or three weeks. We talked about substance abuse and how we want to communicate this to the whole community. And some of the things that we've found over the last few weeks, definitely a very strong message from our high school students, back to the high school principal, as to some of their concerns and how they would like to proceed. We're definitely heading into a budget decision point where we can potentially budget, if that makes sense, to address the vaping issue. We also started a newsletter, I put together sort of basic comment, and sort of some of the feedback was, you know, you're probably not using as much as you can at this time. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do as the next few weeks progress, and I think that it's important to hear the voices, students, PTA, and really come to a decision on how we want to proceed, maybe larger, more significant than in a specific newsletter. Some specific comments I've heard, particularly from Mrs. Miller, you know, the three things that really are dominating the substance abuse are not going away. It's the vaping, it's the legalization path that seems to be evolving and strengthening, and the threat of opioids. And this has changed where we have to think about this, because it's not what we saw 10 years ago. So, my sense is that the time is right to listen and talk about this the next two weeks, but also, this is a time right now that we can, I can like your thoughts. Where are you standing, what are your thoughts at this point? Anything you wanted to convey? If not, you know, we can simply talk about it at the next meeting.
Do you mean as far as a board forum and a topic?
Yeah, I mean, do you think like a simple newsletter would work, or do you think there are other things we could do?
Can you explain how the newsletter would work?
It would probably be a one-page separate from the budget newsletter, probably, you know, the intent behind it is to enable parents that are not going to the meetings that the principals are holding on vaping and substance abuse, and really try to reach out to the parents that aren't seeing that, that aren't involved as much. I think that's the concern that led to the newsletter. There are some parents that aren't, you know, as engaged as others. But typically, the parents that are attending a high school meeting for a high schooler, I think they see it and they understand it, and they're probably taking actions to address it within, with their student. But others are not. How do we get their attention, I think, is the concern we've got.
In the newsletter, we provide links to other resources for the parents, because sometimes meetings, parents can't make it at night, they have other obligations, or whatever the case may be. You know, where we can lead them to other videos about it, or other things that the community has done, working with Becky.
Just to inject, a lot of schools are doing that now, or planning to do that now. So, one of the things that I was saying to Mr. Presley is, and I said it to Mrs. Stevenson, they corrected me, if I send a correspondence out versus a building principal, parents more likely would look at the building principal's correspondence, because that's the person that they know. And I was using one of our elementary principal called it the GP corner in his newsletter, parents, because it's more local. So, one of the things we've been talking to, particularly this topic on vaping, and is principals sending out correspondences to parents at their building, at their level, to make it a more personal connection than something broader. So, I'm just sharing that with you, because those things are happening or will be happening, some of the same things you're saying, you know, what are the resources for parents that tap into? So, I just wanted to share that, that many things are happening on different fronts. So, that's where we're having the conversation of where's the redundancy and is this the best value for the board's input, if you will?
Did we answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, the attempt, would we put links in it, but we're already seeing principals do that. I think also we want to sort of include, sort of a section written by the superintendent, sections written by the respective building principals, just to convey their perspective, potentially something from students, depending on how students wanted to convey that. But a lot of that sort of is happening, a lot of it sort of is going to be discussed in the next two weeks where we potentially could be taking specific actions on things. So, I think we want to sort of convey this, maybe that would be something better suited to, you know, some specific articles within the budget newsletter, which I think a lot of people read, and possibly even augmented by letters to the community and local papers, just making people aware, this is what we're doing, and maybe other things out there. But I think that if there is an intent behind it, it's probably kind of limiting and narrowing and somewhat redundant. And it's worth, over the next few weeks, figuring out what we could do as we uphold to potentially including some of this into the budget. I think a lot of things in the budget, over the years, have always been support mechanisms that do enable our substance abuse issues to get resolved, but it's always good to reaffirm that. So, that was our thinking behind it, is that maybe it's good to take a broader approach.
When would you send out the newsletter? What's the timeline? You're looking for this.
I would say probably, yeah, spring, spring before budget time, possibly during the budget, as within the budget newsletter.
Is it possible to add, when the vote takes place, you know, there's a survey, that the voters will fill out some, not all? I mean, and we usually analyze that later. Is it possible to ask some questions, use that as an opportunity to get some feedback, whether people are being, or hearing about this, or concerned?
I think it's a great conversation topic to bring forward. The concern I have is that the people that vote are the ones that are typically engaged. I personally feel that there's some parents that never vote, that are not as engaged with their student's life, and now, those are the ones that I think will seriously regret the fact they didn't take an action, you know, soon, in terms of ensuring that their student is safe from these things. And how to reach them? If they're not to vote, then...
Well, I mean, we could use a couple of different ways to gauge that feedback. We could ask, because we don't know, we haven't asked that question, but we could do like the SIS messenger.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. Can I suggest then, because it's always about effectiveness. One of the things we, actually, I don't want to say can't, because it sounds like it's not a mandate, we try to keep the budget newsletter relatively pure, because we have legal stipulation on plain language budgeting, all those kind of things, and not doing something that may seem to sway one way or the other. So, that's one piece of it. However, Mrs. Hoffman hitting nail on heads, I just wrote on here, is that one of the things that we can do is certainly, I think electronically, because if I'm not mistaken, certainly elementary, middle school, and could even possibly high school, we have upwards of 90% plus of our parents that are on the portal. And so, maybe some correspondence with that, with maybe just a little survey feedback piece to, one, give some gauge of how many people actually read it. Two, the questions, if we structure the questions that, because we don't want to ask questions as to ask questions, but structure the questions that provide us some information to help, when I say us, building level administrators, folks addressing it, so it could become an instructive process as well. So, maybe that could be where's our correspondence, expressing thoughts, issues, concerns from the board, and then asking, you know, several pointed type of questions, that we could gather some information to gauge how we can maybe even plan forward on some things. So, that might be a more effective route that probably hit a larger number of people in a way that we can do. You know, we do the newsletter, and we do, for instance, budget, that's the reason we do budget publication in 10 different ways, because we know that, okay, the newsletter hits certain people, and certain people, they get it and sits on their counter until after the budget vote. Then they say, "I didn't get my newsletter." So, that's why, so this might be a more effective route, if you will, to do something. So, we can, if the board wants to think about, you know, some type of statement, if you will, and then we kind of fashion something, and maybe we could think about some questions that can give us some enlightenment of what's the awareness level of the community and/or what are some actual next steps or some thoughts people may have, so we kind of keep the community engaged in a very important conversation.
Any other thoughts or comments on this?
I do think that redundancy is, you know, sometimes people don't want to hear it, and it's something that, you know, obviously, it is what it is. But I do think that being redundant in a, you know, this kind of topic is also necessary. I think that it shows our community that this is not going away, and that we're serious about how we feel about it. And that it's an issue we're addressing.
Yeah.
So, I do think it has its value.
Good point. Any others? Okay, at this point, we're done with the public comments. We have a policy meeting next, tomorrow. And a couple of updates for board members. The 26th, the morning of the 26th of March, there is a session run by Udicap National on school safety, some have expressed an interest, at least two. So, I will get an email to this contact and make sure, you know, we'll have a couple of folks and get you more of the details. Okay, that's the only issue on the schedule. At this point, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Hoffman, reading adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.